Good morning. Welcome to the first monthly meeting of March of the Greenwich Board of Selectmen. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a public meeting of the Board of Selectmen, but not a public hearing. And as Chair, I reserve the right to call upon any in attendance to pose questions, or answer, or make comments on any matters that are before the Board today. There are copies of the meeting's agenda on the table as you enter the meeting room. Item number two on today's agenda is approval of the minutes from the meeting that was held on February 25th. Are there any corrections or changes to those minutes? If not, is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
No.
Without objection. Okay, under Updates, bear with me, I'm gonna try to do this from the calendar. So on March 2nd, I had a meeting with the League of Women Voters, Cindy Anderson, specifically to discuss with them the results of the findings that they're going to be presenting related to their study of the RTM, as well as discuss some other programs that they're going to be hosting throughout the year. On Friday, the 4th, I had an interview with the finalist for the Director of Purchasing in Administrative Services position. An offer was extended to that individual, and pursuant to the requisite background checks and physical, we should be making an announcement shortly on that particular position. On Monday, the 7th, I had the pleasure of taking a tour of the central fire station with the esteemed Alan Manelli, Superintendent of Building Construction and Maintenance. I was joined by Ben Branyan and Melissa Jones of our office, and Alan took us from the basement all the way up to the third floor. I suppose if we were a little bit more daring, he would have let us climb up the ladder to the rooftop. But, as I said, we have a safety committee, so I didn't think that was a good idea, a good example. But needless to say, the project's coming along nicely. There are clearly many components of the structure that the prior structure did not have, notably that its ability to withstand a seismic event, and Alan pointed that out during the tour, how that's constructed, as well as all the various health and safety requirements that are now required in modern construction. So we're optimistic that the work continues at an aggressive pace. There is some details to the facility that certainly take a little bit more time, such as that limestone facade is something that is not as easily applied as other services, and that in itself requires special attention and care. So if there's anything that's challenging about the particular construction, it is that. Outside of that, everything in the inside's looking really, really good. So thank you, Alan, for that. I also attended on Monday evening, the 7th, the hearing of the Inland Wetlands and Water Courses Agency, specifically on the development, or proposed development, at 345 West Putnam Avenue. This is presently the post-road ironworks property. There is a proposal to put in, I believe, 355 units of housing there, but before it can proceed to the other land use agencies, it must get wetlands approval. There are wetlands on the site. There was quite an extensive discussion by the applicant and the neighbors regarding the due diligence that's either been done or not been done, as it relates to researching the historical uses of the property and the impacts it's had on that property and the surrounding area. But the sheer size of it is impactful to the neighborhood, the wetlands, and certainly one I express concern.
How many units were there?
I believe 355.
Wow.
Now, we have down the road at 47 Valley Drive, a 90-unit, 55-and-over development on a much smaller parcel, which also is intensive. But again, the wetlands agency will be looking at this as it relates to their regulations and the applicability of their regulations to the development. But clearly, in both cases, in my opinion, as a layman, and there are others, there is an impact on the wetlands, so.
And on plenty of zoning.
Well, that'll be...
Yeah.
And the zoning, that's correct. On Wednesday, the 9th, I had a meeting with Scott Wyker and Carl Keener of the Greenwich Town Party. Both Mr. Wyker, who's the organizer, and Mr. -- is my pronouncing it right? Cooner? Keener? You weren't there at the meeting. Carl, you know? Is it Keener? I'm Keener. Came by just to introduce themselves. They are taking over the general management. Scott's organizing it, but they're taking over the general management from -- drawing a blank on names, Mr. Valili, who ran it for the last several years. And we had a great conversation about the party, and then the benefits that the party has provided in the way of proceeds from the event, or philanthropic things that have been done for the betterment of the town. So as an example, the Dalio Foundation contributed funds to renovate the Greenwich Common. In addition, we know that they've contributed greatly to the improvement of our parks, and they continue to have an interest in making contributions to the betterment of the community. And really, it was a discussion, an informal discussion, about understanding what the town's needs and opportunities are to do that. So we're excited about that. Yesterday, had a meeting with Al Kava, our Labor Relations Director, Mary Pepe, Ben Branyan, our Town Administrator, Bob Stacy, the Director of HR for the Board of Ed, and Peter Share, in relation to the town's position on healthcare, and how we're going to present our findings in what we think is palatable as we get into labor negotiations. As you may know, the Board of Ed has separate authority in negotiating contracts. Their Board is directly involved, but we felt it was important that we synchronize our thoughts as it relates to the benefits. There was a discussion about putting together a document that would highlight total compensation, inclusive of not only wages and benefits, but looking out at what the impact is to all of the post-retirement costs. So it was a very constructive meeting. Later in the day, I had a visit and met with two residents, Abby Levy and Alex Berkstein. Alexandra is from the Yale School of Environmental Studies, and she has expressed an interest in working with the town to promote the utilization of more environmentally friendly synthetic turf surfaces. And there's one that they particularly have had experience with. It's called Green Play Naturally Organic Safe Infill. They have been meeting with different groups throughout the town. The Board of Parks and Rec has a subcommittee on this. They've spoken to the Conservation Commission. Clearly, they need to be talking with the schools. But I did say that I would share with both of you today, that I did meet with them, and they have -- they were pleasantly surprised that what they've learned about the town is that we actually were leaders in moving toward an organic turf program on many of our parks and school playfields, in advance of the state's requirement about non-pesticide use on those fields. So they were actually interested in helping to promote that, because they thought it's not well-known that Greenwich has taken this position. So certainly encourage that. So as I said, town's organic maintenance program is a big success, but few people know it. They want to help promote that. They also introduced the idea of promoting on private property, if people so choose, signs that say, you know, "We use organic turf management." I said, conceptually, I love the idea, but from an aesthetic point of view, people are very conscious of proliferation of signs, in that I wouldn't hate to see their good intentions maligned by going out and producing signs and putting them out there, and then people jump all over it. So I suggested they get in touch with Mary Hall from Green and Clean and those other groups that have expressed concerns about this. But more importantly for us, they'd like to be part of the conversation about replacement of the synthetic fields. We know that the high school has to be replaced, and here's a little packet of what the material looks like. And I would say these are very highly educated women, who have done a lot deal, a great deal of research, and have a tremendous background in this area. And I welcome them to the discussion. So hopefully, the two of you can meet them. I'm gonna make you copies, if you'd so choose. This is the Artificial Turf Guide from Mount Sinai Children's Environmental Center. Also, yesterday, I was pleased to announce the appointment of Barbara Hines to be the next Executive Assistant to the First Selectman. For those of you familiar with Barbara, she has had a long career with the Greenwich Times Stanford Advocate, before she became the Chief Editor of Patch. She is a resident of Greenwich, and she has immersed herself in getting to know the community through her work, and I look forward to having her join our team on Monday, March 28th, which I hope will be a very long and successful career for her. But welcome, Barbara, and look forward to having her work with us and help us keep everything on the straight and narrow.
So there is life after.
Finally, we had a meeting yesterday, which ties into one of our other actions today, nominations with Mr. John Eddy and Stu Ryder, who are the Chair and Vice Chair of the RTM Appointments Committee. I work with many people in this area during my tenure and previously, even in the RTM. I have to commend them. The level of detail in the materials that they're looking to produce to help people understand the process, educate their members, is really commendable. And I mentioned to them today that I'd share with them their efforts, and we're gonna meet once Barbara gets on board, to see if we could smooth out some of the hiccups that we've had since we haven't had someone like an executive assistant on board to move these along. So again, thanks to both John and Stu. That concludes the Updates. Oh, did you have something? Did you have something on the schools?
No, this is just something completely different. No, ask a question.
Well, under Updates, or when we go to the other thing? Wait. We're on Updates. Did you want to say something?
No, for clarification, we're getting the emails, all these emails regarding the thing.
I haven't seen them.
No, but I'm just asking, for clarification, that would require Executive Board approval? They're asking, I mean, under what?
Well, the problem bringing this up is not on our agenda, I mean, but I hear...
I'm just curious to answer the people back. I'm just curious what comes before us, for what reason?
Right. So Mr. Marzullo is raising a question about a subject that's just come before us today that pertains to Greenwich Hospital seeking permission to allow for a medevac helicopter to land, I believe. I haven't even had a chance to read it, but I presume, on their premise.
Yeah, yeah.
Clearly, like most things that are in the public domain, there are opinions. There's clearly some opinions from folks within that area about it. As to the authority and approval, I can tell you, I have had conversations going back at least six years regarding this. They were very peripheral, but I believe it would be within the purview of the planning and zoning, and likely this body, but I don't know for sure, so I don't...
Just because it -- under what grounds? Just a MI? No?
I don't know for sure. I'd be speculating it has to do with the air rights, but...
Okay, but it would have to come in front of us.
I don't want to call him Mr. Cohen, because we'd be putting him in an uncomfortable position, but he perhaps would know. Out of anybody in this room, you perhaps would know. But needless to say, I thank you for raising it, because what's happening, like these issues, is the mass emails, and so we'll find out. So it is known, though, that in the rare instance of needing that type of transport, the town had previously provided helicopters to land in the backfield here. And I don't know what the change was, but I can recall working for Putnam Trust and the Bank of New York there, and from Mason Street hearing and seeing them land back here. Perhaps you saw it during your time, given what you do, so.
Yep, okay.
You want to become a medevac medic?
No, there's a weight limit.
There's a weight limit?
No.
So thank you, Drew, though, for bringing it up. It's just, I don't have an answer for...
What's my rank come before, yeah?
We will find out.
All right.
Okay, so there's nothing under Old Business. So under New Business today, I'm certainly very excited about this, because it's something that's long been sought, it's something that's long been planned for, and it's something that's been given in a tremendous amount of time and attention as it relates to life safety in the town of Greenwich. And that is the establishment of a Northwest Greenwich Fire Station, as well as the permanent housing and domicile for JEMsMedic IV. Today, we have before us just an overview of the fact that the town is proposing, in the 1617 budget, funds to acquire 4.27 acres at 1241 King Street for the purpose of constructing a JEMsMedic station and firehouse. One property, one building, two distinct uses, with a bifurcation of the uses, meaning they're separate quarters. This will achieve the outcome of two items that have been identified in the town's 10-year plan. We know it's been in the budget before. We know that we purchased a property under the prior administration. We know that that property, after very thorough and exhaustive analysis, was deemed to be inferior for the use that it was purchased for. So today, with the good work of Ben Branyan and Melissa Jones, thank you, the staff in the Selectmen's Office, we've put together some information to share with both of the Selectmen, because, as you can imagine, this acquisition is contingent upon not only funding, it's contingent upon planning and zoning approval, municipal improvement. With that municipal improvement, there's a requirement for a subdivision plan. The seller is the Fairview Country Club, and we're working diligently with all the parties. Mr. Cohen is here, he's the Attorney for Fairview Country Club, as well as Katie DeLuca and the members of her commission, in sequencing all of these steps in action, so that we can have a proper proposal advanced forward. So perhaps, Ben, I'm gonna turn the focus over to you, if you want to go through this, because you worked very hard at putting all these details together, and have been in communication with all the various parties. And again, I commend you for the work you've done. And as well as Alan Manelli, I don't need -- Alan has really been at this longer than all of us. And so between the two of you, how do you want to?
I can give a very quick overview, and Alan can speak to all of the due diligence that he's done on this property, that we believe we're in very good shape, that'll meet the needs of the town. As the First Selectman mentioned, this is the first reading. Hopefully, we'll seek approval from this Board at your March 24th meeting of MI. This is the first of two MIs. This MI is for the acquisition of land. Later on, several months later, if we receive the A&E funding with the site plan, you'll receive an MI for the improvement to the land, but this is your first MI. Part of this process, and working with the town attorney, with representatives from the Fairview Country Club, as well as land use, it's in the best interest to have this MI presented at the same time with the subdivision application. And we've -- the town will be taking the lead on that application, will be presenting with the MI, so land use can have the legal land that we're looking to purchase, so they can render a decision with subdivision. That's the quick overview. This property, though, I just want to point out, is consistent with the Plan of Conservation Development, both on S Page 2 of the memo. Just for the record, it's Action Strategy 4.31. They look to -- funding for the new fire station on King Street should be approved in Action Strategy 6.29, Study the Delivery and Management of Fire Services and Facilities. And I think we're all well-aware of the many, many years of moving this project forward. We believe we're -- it did pass the BET Budget Committee, so the BET, full BET, we expect will take action on this at their full meeting on the 21st of this month. And that means funding will be then presented to the RTM. But it's important to move this forward, so we can continue to show progress as it moves through a parallel pass with the funding. But Al or I can answer any questions you may have on the property itself.
Great, thank you, Ben. Just to review the dates for both of you, so if you're interested in attending and certainly speaking, so next Thursday, the 17th, is the public hearing for which comment will be taken on the budget, which includes the appropriation for this property. Then, of course, the decision meeting is then the 21st, or the...
Monday, the 21st.
And there was one other date. March 30th, I guess this will be contingent upon the BET's approval. I had been invited to attend the RTM Budget Overview Committee to address a series of questions as it relates to fire services and the validity of the requests for this project. So as you can see, everybody's attention is focused on this. It is probably one of the top three issues coming forward in the 1617 budget. So we're taking one step at a time, at the same time that we've laid out the chronology of events and actions that have to occur to bring this to fruition. So, Alan, if you could, and maybe what you could do, because this is for public edification, is from a very global perspective, talk about the strengths of this parcel over the prior one, and then after you touch on that, just how you would go about achieving it.
Back in 2012, when we were attempting to develop the property at 1327 King Street for a fire-only facility, we had actually put in a subject release, and the BET turned that subject release for Architectural Services down, and they instructed us to go out and look for a piece of property. At that time, you had asked me to develop my thoughts on what the ultimate piece of property would be, in size, for either a standalone fire station or a joint facility. In looking at this property at 1241, it's 98 percent what we think is the ultimate piece of property. It totally meets our needs to support a joint facility. It has good access and good sightlines on King Street. When Fairview Country Club first made the town aware of it, aware that they might be possibly selling that piece of property with their permission, we went up and walked the property and started performing our due diligence, which included soil testing for septic systems. And what we did was, at that time, we established a certain criteria of the size of the building and the number of beds, so that we were able to find the right amount of soil that we needed to install a septic system, and that was confirmed. We've also performed our environmental impact studies, both Phase 1 and Phase 2, and found no issues there. So from our point of view, this site is superior to anything else we've looked at over the last four years.
Great. Does anyone have any questions? So, Ben, can you perhaps touch upon, while there's no requirement in the Charter as it relates to municipal improvement referrals by the Board of Selectmen to be done over multiple meetings, we have, where there's been a substantive request, usually presented them at one meeting, acted upon them at the next. So this is the introduction of the MI for this particular purpose. Our intent is to then, once all the other steps necessary to move the MI are completed, we will then take it back up under Old Business and act upon it. Correct?
Correct. Hopefully, at the March 24th meeting, we can have, under Old Business, action on the MI for the acquisition of land. We'll then work on the application and submit that to the land use agencies. But at the same time, we're working on the subdivision application, which is a significant amount of work we have to put an application together for. So we're just making sure we get this taken care of, as we make sure we get all the paperwork ready, so we can get it in front of land use, as we work towards a critical path of ultimate goals, closing on this land on or about July 1, which is the first day we have access to the new budget year. And as we know, the RTM will vote on the budget May 9th, so hopefully, we can have this all wrapped up, and with all the approvals necessary.
Great. And again, I would encourage you not to be shy in contacting the members of the Commission and letting them know your position on the particular, you know, facility. I think it's important, you know, we hear from them when we make the nomination, but this is an issue of significant consequence, and I think it's appropriate to express your point of view.
Good. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes New Business. Under Appointments and Nominations, there are a couple that I'd like to see us move upon today. Under the Inland Wetlands and Water Courses Agency, I have had an opportunity now to go to a couple of their meetings, and we know these folks. So we know that Bill Galvin, his term is up. He has served since 2005. I had the opportunity to see Bill in action, and he's certainly very knowledgeable and a very conscientious member. I would move his renomination to the Inland Wetlands and Water Courses Agency for a term expiring 3/31/20. That's Bill Galvin, G-A-L-V-I-N. Is there -- it's been seconded by Mr. Toner. Is there a discussion? If not, all in favor? And we have received from the Chairman, Brian Harris, a suggestion for elevating one of the alternates to a opening, I believe. Let me just make sure we have the right one here. This is replacing or succeeding Jim Carr, and that would be Jay Schowendorf. Jay is an engineer. He has served on the Commission since 2013. And again, succeeding... And again, succeeding Jim Carr, who has been on the agency since 2010.
It's definitely Jay.
That's the one, yeah. Because remember, he's stepping off and then he's not showing, but it's, I just, is it the right person?
Right.
These are specific meeting?
Yes.
I'm going to look for the, I had the email. One second, I want to see if I could find it.
Email from Brian?
Yeah. Jim, I'm pretty sure. Makes sense.
I don't remember. But it sounds right.
Yeah, here we go. We found it. Let's see. Sorry. Yeah, that's correct. I just found the email. Okay, so, so that's for a regular position. So, the nomination hasn't been made. I'll move the nomination of Jay Schondorf to a regular member of the Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Agency for a term expiring 3/31/20. And that's Jay Schondorf, S-C-H-O-N-D-O-R-F.
Second option.
It's been seconded by Mr. Marzullo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, just so we can keep track, we then have two openings in the alternate position for the Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Agency. Do you want to move Dennis Yeskey to the alternate? Did you meet Mr. Yeskey? I did, to come for alternate for P&amp;Z because we have two.
That's fine. Go ahead.
Okay, just doing some administrative review here. So, looking at the Planning and Zoning Commission, we presently have two openings as alternate members. We've interviewed a gentleman by the name of Dennis Yeskey some months ago. Dennis' last name is spelled Y-E-S-K-E-Y. We interviewed him in the fall of 2015. And I would move Dennis' nomination to an alternate member for a term expiring 3/31/17. And that is because he's filling in one of the open spots. It's been seconded by Mr. Toner. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, for the Nathaniel Witherell Board, had the pleasure of interviewing Dr. Elizabeth Dr. Sidereides is an ophthalmologist. She has been practicing ophthalmology for 26 years in Stanford. The majority of her patients are senior citizens. Since 1998, she's been the managing partner of Stanford Ophthalmology, a five doctor practice with 20 employees in an optical shop. She understands basic medical economics and has practical working knowledge of Medicare reimbursements and regulation. She is also a partner at Wilton Surgery Center, a multi-specialty outpatient ambulatory surgical center jointly owned by physician Stanford Hospital and AM Search, a publicly traded company that owns and operates ASCs. She has a BA from Harvard, her MD from Columbia, and did her residency and fellowship at NYU. She's been a resident of Greenwich since 1990 and she has volunteered at DOMAS and Trailblazers Academy. I had an opportunity to meet with her on Wednesday and can tell you that she has done some research into the issues that are facing Witherell. She has begun to read some of the reports and attended a board meeting. And while she has not been actively engaged in the government, she has volunteered at the Greenwich High School in the area of the band and would like to be more involved and give back to the community. I found her to be very thoughtful. We were talking about the issues facing Witherell. She was sharing with me some of the issues that are occurring even in the area of pharmaceuticals and the rising and rampant cost of generics, which she's involved with when she does surgery for cataracts or things, people take drops. And she was saying the escalation alone, just on those, has been astronomical as these companies are bought up by private equity groups and so forth. So, she's very attuned to, as she says here, the economics of what's happening and recognizes that there needs to be some decisions as to how to manage those costs up there at the Witherell. So, just trying to find the date we would put her. Okay, so, we have two, three openings. Right, didn't, help me out here. What does this say? I can't. So, he's to the RTM, she's to the RTM.
Yeah.
Vacant. Vacant. She, she went in.
She went in, yeah.
Vacant. So, but this doesn't make sense. So, it's one of these two. It's, wait, it's this one? Or this one? Oh, I know why. That's why this is Posner. That's why. Okay. So, I'd like to move Dr. Sidereides for a regular member of the Nathaniel Witherell Board for a term expiring 3/31/19. And again, Elizabeth S-I-D-E-R-I-D-E-S. Dr. Elizabeth. And her husband is a neonatologist at Greenwich Hospital. Do you know him? So, she's been moved. Is there a second?
Yes.
Do you know her? Him?
No.
Do you do? Okay, so, is there a motion to approve a Dr. Sidereides nomination? Okay, without objection. So, Mr. Toner and Mr. Marzullo. Did you want to do Heather or did you not want to? Are there any other nominations? Oh, what about Snack?
Snack, yes.
Did we move Cindy last time?
No, let's move her to Snack.
So, I would move the appointment of Cindy Anderson to the Selectmen's Nomination Advisory Committee. Her term would begin in June or July 1, technically July 1. But according to this, it says 6/18, proposed would be her conclusion date. So, the motion is to appoint, in this case, because it's a Selectmen's Committee, appoint Cindy C-Y-N-D-Y Anderson to the Selectmen's Nomination Advisory Committee for a term expiring 6/30/18. Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great. I believe that concludes. Are there any other nominations? That concludes item number six, Appointments and Nominations. We do have item seven, Executive Session, which is for pending litigation and settlement of claims. I do believe there's one settlement, proposed settlement before us on a worker's compen-
Can I just run it?
Sure, there are two on a worker's, on worker's compensation cases. So, at this time, is there a motion to go into Executive Session for the purposes of discussing and potentially settling worker's comp claim? Okay, without objection.